My name is Chadwick Smalley. I'm the Community Development Director. This is my first Planning Commission meeting, and so I'm happy to be here. You'll notice we don't have with us our Chair nor our Vice Chair for this evening. And so, in light of that, I am calling to order the meeting of the regular Emeryville Planning Commission meeting of September 28th. The time is 6:32 PM. And at this point, I'd like to, we need to designate a Chair for this meeting. And so I'd like to open it up for nominations for that role.
I'd like to volunteer to chair tonight's meeting. I think I can get us through this quite speedily.
Yeah, I would appreciate a motion. So if somebody could nominate Commissioner Martinez to chair the meeting, and we get a second, we vote on it.
I will move.
I will second that.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Wax, I believe I heard, and second by Zoe Chaff. Thank you. I'll go ahead and call the role. Commissioner Chaff?
Here.
Commissioner Henme?
Aye.
Commissioner Ming? Commissioner Wax?
Here.
Vice Chair Dram is absent. Chair Gazzoni is absent. And Commissioner Martinez?
Is this role or?
This is to designate you as the Chair.
Oh, aye.
Aye. Thank you. We can do the, we can do the role now. If you, we kind of did that backwards.
Very good. Would staff please call the role?
Yeah, thank you. All right. This is for role. Commissioner Chaff?
Here.
Commissioner Henme?
Here.
Commissioner Ming?
Here.
Commissioner Wax?
Aye.
Vice Chair Dram is absent. Chair Gazzoni is absent. And Interim Chair Martinez?
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Director. That, I just want to note at the top of this meeting, the Commissioners are probably, Commissioners are probably aware of this from reading the agenda, but Item 7.2 is continued to October 26th. However, if there's anyone here who wishes to give public comment, we will open public comment at that time and read into the record any public comments that are mailed in as of that time, and recognize folks who want to speak on that item. But it is continued to a separate meeting on October 26th. So now is the time for regular public comment. So if there are any members of the audience who wish to address the Commission on matters within the Commission's purview, but that are not on tonight's agenda, this is the time that they have. They will, they're unlimited to three minutes each. And I first would like to check to see if there are any online speaker cards for these general comments.
Let me check. There are no attendees, and therefore no raised hands on Zoom.
Okay, and if?
And there are no, yeah, there are no comment cards on non-agenda items.
Very good. Thank you. And I don't see any members of the public who are approaching the podium, which is what you may do if you wish to give general public comment on an item that is not on the agenda. So we'll go ahead and close public comment at this time. Next, before the Commission, we have the approval of action minutes from August 24th, 2023. Commissioners, are there any changes or corrections to the minutes from that meeting? Okay, seeing none, is there any public comment on the action minutes for August 24th, 2023? I see none in the room. Are there any online submissions or speaker cards?
No.
Okay. Next up, that'll bring us to the Community Development Director's report.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here, as I mentioned.
Oh, I'm sorry. We didn't vote on the minutes.
Yeah, you might take a motion on the minutes.
Commissioners, may I have a motion on the minutes to approve the August 24th action minutes?
I will move to approve the minutes.
And is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Member Chaff, and a second by Member Henme. Please call the role.
Commissioner Chaff?
Aye.
Commissioner Henme?
Aye.
Commissioner Ming?
Aye.
Commissioner Wax?
Aye.
Members Dram and Gazzoni are absent, and Chair Martinez?
Aye. And now I will turn it over to our Community Development Director for the report.
Great. I'm still happy to be here. And this, so the thing I was going to say is, in part of these remarks, was that I was going to ask that you bear with me as we stumble through this meeting. And you've already, we've already experienced that, so I appreciate, I appreciate the patience on the part of the Commission. As I mentioned, yeah, Chad Smalley, I'm happy to be here. I'll give you a brief council recap. On September 5th, the City Council formed an ad hoc subcommittee to select a name for the park at the Emory, which is the common, commonly known as Sherman Williams. And that committee reviewed crowdsourced suggestions that were collected through the city's website, and brought back five, the top five suggestions. The committee consisted of Vice Mayor Welch, and Councilmember Mora, and Patty Weber and Gail Donaldson of the Parks and Recs Committee. On September 19th, that meeting was canceled due to a lack of a quorum, and so a special meeting was held on September 26th. And that agenda included proclamation of September as Suicide Prevention Month. The City Council adopted a Code of Ethics and Conduct for elected and appointed officials. And you'll be hearing more about that as that Code of Conduct applies to Commissioners as well as appointed committee members. And as I mentioned earlier, the ad hoc committee's suggestions for the name of the park and what was selected was Huichin Park. Huichin is an Aloney word for, for the land. And so it honors the history of that place. Some upcoming events to know about. Past events include the movie at the pool that was held on September 22nd, the coastal cleanup, September 23rd, both greatly successful events. Upcoming events include the annual Celebration of the Arts Exhibition Opening Reception Night. So mark your calendars, October 6th, at 6:00 PM, to be held at the Public Market in the face, the space formerly occupied by Urban Outfitters. And on October 28th is the upcoming Harvest Festival. And this will be held at Huichin Park from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM on the 28th. This will be a big deal. This is a big event. There's a lot of planning and fun things being put together for that. So definitely try to, to attend if you can. And with that, I just want to finally remark, and some of you have heard me say this, but I want to say it for the record, that I have big shoes to fill. And, and so I do appreciate your patience, but I also want to point out that Charlie built a lot of things in this city, and was involved in a lot of things that physically got built in this city. But the best thing he built was the staff of the Community Development Department. And it, I am honored to have the opportunity to, to try to fill his shoes. But I'm also really encouraged by the fact that I have this wonderful staff, some of which are here tonight, some which are not. And I'm really looking forward to working with them and with you all to continue though. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions on this staff report? I know I have one, but anyone else? Commissioner?
Just wanted to welcome you to the new position. Would you mind giving us a little of your background?
Sure. I didn't want to, I thought about offering that. But I am from Michigan originally, but I have been in California for about 20 years in various positions in local government. I have worked as an associate planner, and an assistant planner for Solano County, California. I was an associate planner for the city of South San Francisco. And during that time, I obtained my master's degree in public administration with an urban administration emphasis. I left the city of South San Francisco to become a development project manager with the Richmond Redevelopment Agency, the city of Richmond. And by the time I left the city of Richmond in 2016, I was the capital projects manager for the city, and came here, it's about six years ago, as the economic development and housing manager for the city of Emeryville. So different, very different places, Solano County to South San Francisco to Emeryville and Richmond, and different roles in all of those communities as well. So in a nutshell, that's, that's my background. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. When does the Code of Ethics go into effect? And when do we hear more about that as Commissioners?
You will be hearing more about that as, you know, from the Clerk's office, all of the various committees are going to, are going to get, members are all going to get some information about that. It does include signing it to acknowledge it. And so the, the information is forthcoming. I can't stake to a date because I don't know exactly when, but soon.
It's coming down the road?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, that'll bring us to Item 6, which is Disclosure of Expartee Communications and Identifications of Conflict of Interest. Does anyone have any disclosures or expartee communications? Commissioner Chaff?
I need to recuse myself from Item 7.1 because I own real property in a close distance to the item.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have an expartee communication? Nope? Okay. So we'll have you restate that right after we call the item as well. So next up, we have a public hearing. This is Item 7.1, and this is on the four-unit replacement at 1271 64th Street. Is there a staff presentation on this item?
Yes, we will be handing it over to Navarrocks.
Should I go ahead and recuse now?
Yes, and, and sorry, we'll, we'll have you restate your, your recusal. And is this one where she needs to leave the room, or? Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to recuse myself from this item because I own real property at APN 49-1471-26, which is within 1,000 feet, I think within 500 feet of the project site. And this is my primary residence.
Thank you, Commissioner Chaff.
Thank you.
We'll give you a moment to go ahead and physically recuse yourself. Do we have a way to reach her once the item is over? Okay. Okay, and the Commissioner has left the room, and I'll turn it over to Navarrocks for our presentation.
All right, thank you very much. Good evening, Chair. Good evening. Good evening, Commission. So I'll be presenting tonight on Item 7.1, the request to modify the conditions of approval for the four-unit replacement project on 1271 64th Street. I'll be making my staff presentation. The applicant also has a presentation for you this evening after I'm done. So I'm just going to walk you through, like, how do we get here tonight? Like, what's going on here? So this is the approved project. Just so you know what it's about, there is an existing building. It was approved to have a third floor addition. And there is nothing before you tonight that is about the project itself. There is no proposes to change anything about the project. This is staying the same. It's about the conditions of approval. So back in 2016, Planning Commission approved the project for the additional floor that I talked about, to make two, two units from two bedrooms to three bedrooms. And then in December 2020, a building permit for that was pulled. And then in 2020, there was a stop work order issued for it. The, it was noted that the construction exceeded what was permitted. In this case, that meant that the building actually had been demolished instead of modified. So in May 2021, there was a notice violation issued. And how that works out is that a new, a new permit needed to be issued because demolition requires City Council approval, not Planning Commission approval. It's a completely different project now. And it also has some building code changes and everything because it's not modification of existing, and it's new construction. So went back to Planning Commission for recommendation, got approved for a recommendation to City Council, went back in December 21, 2021, to City Council, and they also approved the revised project. But at that meeting, the City Council made two amendments to the conditions. One was that they wanted to make sure that the final height of the building was verified because there was a question about how building height was presented in the plans. And then the second one, which is what's being discussed here tonight, was that, one was added saying, "Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the Community Development Director shall confirm that the applicant has paid five times the cost of all eligible permit fees in accordance with the city's master fee schedule and the building vision, which requires such payment for construction for work without permits." So what's going on with this is that the fee, this condition did not need to be added, but it was an emphasis of the City Council. So regardless of whether or not this condition is in the conditions of approval, the fee, or if this fee is in the conditions of approval, the fee has to be paid. It's part of the Emeryville Municipal Code, and I have the code excerpts here. But basically, it says, "You're not getting your permit unless you pay the fees." And there's no mechanism to not pay fees. There's no mechanism to revoke fees. And it was very clear that the work was done without permits and that demolition had occurred. So there's no way around that circumstance. So the master fee schedule explicitly states, "Construction work without required permits is five times the cost of actual permit." It's not a sliding scale or anything like that. It just says five times cost. So applicant is before you tonight. They are requesting to have that fee removed on the basis that the work that was done, that the demolition was done, was not authorized by them, and that the property owner did not do this work, was done by the contractor without their knowledge. So they have a presentation for you this evening about that. And their findings for staff is that to modify the conditions, the Commission would need to make the required findings that's required for all conditional use permits. We do not have a resolution for you tonight because staff does not feel that the Commission has the authority, as I explained earlier, to modify those conditions of approval for the conditional use permit, to remove the fees. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I am here.
Are there any questions at the staff level? Commissioner Henme?
Is there a mechanism to, to remove the fees other than the Planning Commission?
No, there is nothing in our code that talks about removing fees, to my knowledge.
The City Council, if they were to modify the conditions of approval?
There is nothing in our code about removing a required fee. In the fee schedule, it doesn't have a revocation of fees section.
Navar, would you mind if I clarified that answer for Commissioner Henme? Commissioner Henme, I think you might be asking, does the City Council have authority that you, the Planning Commission, don't have? And the answer to that is no. Staff's position is that both the Planning Commission and the Council do not have the authority to remove that condition of approval, or otherwise authorize that this applicant does not have to pay the five times permit fee.
Okay, I think we can move forward with the applicant's presentation. I'll just ask that the applicant, please limit your presentation to 10 minutes. I think that should give you plenty of time to share all of your information with us.
Oh, that's not where you went, was it, Mira? Oh, that's important. Thank you. Sorry. All right. Okay, I know. Scoot over, please. There we go. So this is each of your messages you just pressed now sequentially.
Oh, that's the same thing. Oh, the text message. Oh, you didn't get the text message?
I did, yes. So it says what it is.
So that says text?
Email.
So you go, it doesn't have the text message?
I can pull that up real quick. That's weird. Sorry, apologies.
That's okay, but I, I believe the Commission was also provided all of these as attachments to our agenda, so we, we've. Sure. Understood.
What happened here? So, yeah, I don't know what happened there. So this one is the email. Well, apologies. Let me move that up here for you. If you want to talk about the other ones, you can, or you can wait either way. Okay, so it'll just take me a moment to pull that up for you.
No problem. In fact, let's just adjourn very briefly if anyone needs to take a quick three-minute break while Navar gets those in order. We can take a bio break. So the time is 6:50. Let's re-adjourn by 6:55. 7:00 PM, we are reconvening this meeting, and we will begin with the applicant presentation. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Thank you, staff, for getting that up and running. And Mr. Bryant, if you will contain your presentation to 10 minutes, I think that will be sufficient for you to share all of your slides. Please go ahead.
I'll try my best. Hello, everybody. My name's Akis Bryant, the owner of 1271 64th Street. And the reason why I'm here is I'm requesting to remove the five times fee that was given to me because I feel this unfair. And hopefully, maybe even though Navar said that it can't be removed, maybe this conversation can change something in the future for other people that may come in my situation in the future. But I'm going to start off with saying that this here is the building permit, that it shows that the contractor basically pulled the permit, the permit was given to him, and the city was aware that he was working on the building. And the city was aware that he was working on the building. And they authorized him to work on the building as well as I did. This next clip is basically a text message between me and the contractor, him telling me that he's, he thinks it's a good idea to basically not follow the plans that says sister the studs, which means keep the existing studs there and put the new studs next to them. And I was asking him like, do you, do you think that if you did that, like, will the inspector have a problem? And he says, no, it's code. So I'm like, okay. So I thought about it a little bit. Then it didn't, it didn't sit right with me when he said that, so I basically reached out to my architect. And I asked my architect about it, my architect said, no, he has to basically follow the plans. So that brought us to this email here, so I had my architect basically email me and see, see the contractor in the email and explain to him that he's supposed to leave as much of the existing building there as possible. So after that email, that was the end of it. I left town. And all of a sudden, the contractor calls me saying that he basically got this stop work order. And I'm like, for what? You feel me? He couldn't really explain why. But when I reached out to the city, I basically found out that he got it for demolition or whatever. Then something else, so basically those documents show that I had nothing to do with it, the contractor did it. I told him not to do it. He told me that it was code and it was legal for him to do the things that he did. You feel me? I hired him, he's a contractor, I'm not. Also, I thought it was unfair that in this clip before the John Bouders or whatever, he basically, before he asked people to take a vote, he basically pretty much slandered my name and said some untrue things about me and actions that I never did. And he started it off with that, his, so how do I play this clip?
I see the play button at the bottom.
Yeah, so this is a clip of him saying some untrue stuff about me before he asked people to vote on the situation. Let me play the clip. Oh, is the volume up? Oh, unmute? Can you guys hear it?
Guys, hear it, hear it, hear it?
No.
This clip on the original thing, like on this, so I could play it from here. Maybe I can play it from the first original thing you set up?
So the one that was on the computer.
Studying the, before you made it.
Because it was on that.
Right. So if the rest of the presentation on the computer works, then so it just.
Yeah. It opens back to it.
So you'll have to stop sharing and then go on there and share.
We're just gonna keep figuring this out, folks, since we're having this technical difficulty.
And I'll, I'll just note for the commission and for the public that the, this video is also included as attachment number seven to the agenda item, so this is available to everyone in the public as well as to all of the commissioners and was given to them in advance.
That's the staff presentation. I think I closed it, now it's not there. So if we share screen and go back to the presentation folder.
Mr. Bryant, I won't hold you to ten minutes while all of these are, yeah.
But that one was the one that was downloaded at four fifty-six, so it's not the one that was modified then, right? You see what I'm saying? The video should be there, though.
Should be there.
Okay. Let's do that instead. Okay. Here we go. I mean, sharing's a good idea, thanks Chad. Okay. So the, the share is not from here, that's the problem.
Think, maybe you can play the audio from your phone? Oh, you got it?
So I have a couple of comments of my own.
Okay, we can hear it now.
Particular application, I, I agree with member Medina, this particular application is troubling to me. I was on the.
Go back to the beginning.
Okay.
And then you can press play whenever you like.
Alright. Yeah, so this video is a video of the mayor who has access to the city attorneys and he can basically pull all the legal information he needs. Here, basically slandering and accusing me of doing something in the worst fashion. He accused me of evicting low, four low-income families when it was, nobody was even evicted. And he said around Christmas time. To put a, the around Christmas time, I feel that was like a cherry on top of a slander sundae before he asks people to vote for me to make me appear to be the worst type of guy. So I'm gonna play that video and then.
So I have a couple of comments of my own. So I have a couple of comments of my own, so this is, this particular application, I, I agree with member Medina. This particular application is troubling to me. I was on the planning commission in twenty fifteen and sixteen when this application came before us, and at that time, the property owner, who is the same property owner we have before us today, evicted four low-income families, including section eight family members at the week before Christmas. And all the residents in the neighborhood came out to that planning commission meeting very upset, and that's not a planning commission consideration. Whether or not a person is evicted is not subject to the planning regulations. However, the.
Yeah, so basically, he said that, but let me tell you, like, the building, this is a building that I basically bought in foreclosure. And there were two tenants that weren't paying, one of them I relocated. It was only three tenants there, one of them I relocated, and the other two, I basically came to agreement to basically not worry about the past rent, not worry about the rent they haven't paid me. And basically, just, I, I've kinda hid the name so you couldn't really see, but basically give them four months, agreed, we, I agreed with them to give them four months of free rent in exchange of them just moving, not trying to collect the previous rent, so, and this is the signature of me and this is the person I had the agreement with, but and you see here, it's dated here. This was way past Christmas time where we even had this agreement. And the time that he and he was able to stay from that time until April, so it was like free, it was four months after the agreement and I didn't collect any rent or anything like that, so I just thought it was unfair for him to get in, get in public, have the, the different Emeryville newspapers start writing these false statements about me when I basically agreed to give somebody free rent and, and, and not collect any of the previous money in exch- in exchange for them moving. And he said those things before people were to vote, and I felt that could have probably had an effect on how people voted because he, that was his opening statement, like making me this, this person that did something I didn't even do. And he's the mayor, he's not like some person that doesn't have the power to get the city attorney to research things for him, you know what I mean? So, yeah, and that's, that's my presentation. Oh, and this is, this is, what is this? Oh, this is dated, oh, the, so the judge signed it in April, so everybody agreed way. None of this happened around Christmas time and nobody got evicted, and I don't know why he would say that.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Are there any questions from the commission, clarifying questions for the applicant? Commissioner Henme?
Yeah, Mr. Bryant. So, thank you for your, the background materials. But I guess the, the question is one of, of despite the various issues that have been raised. Do you underst- the building was demolished, correct?
Correct, the building was demolished by the licensed contractor.
And should not have been, should not have been.
It should not have been demolished.
So the five-time fee issue is based on that act, whether or not the mayor was accurate or not about his statements. The, the fee was based on that action, you understand that?
You understand that, but it, it's still, when you ask people to vote a certain thing, they don't even, they didn't even have a fair chance to vote. Even, somebody might have said, well, wait a minute, but he made me this horrible person, you know what I mean, in the community, and I, I feel that could have had an effect on somebody, they didn't have the correct information even make a vote. When you're automatically thinking this person did such and such, you know what I mean? Like, he started, he knew, I can't say what he was thinking, but for some reason, he strategically started it off making me this horrible monster of a landlord, you know what I mean, and I just don't, I don't feel that was fair. For the mayor out of all people, he's already the head of the city to get up there and just slander me like that, and then have the different papers write articles about me, like, I don't, I just, I wasn't feeling that.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other clarifying questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none. This is a public hearing, the time now is seven thirteen PM. And anyone from the public who wishes to address the commission on this matter is welcome to do so. They will have three minutes each. Is there anyone in the room? I don't see any members of the public here with us physically. Have there been any speaker cards submitted? Or is there anyone on Zoom with a raised hand?
Yes, we have one electronic speaker card submitted. I, I do note that the, the name is the same as an attendee, so Ms. Granger, if you want to make your comment verbally, please raise your hand, otherwise I will read it into the record. And so we do have one hand raised.
Okay, please recognize Ms. Granger for three minutes.
Go, go ahead.
Thank you. We happen to live in the neighborhood and this project has been a long pain point in Isor. Living near it with feral cats now taking residence in there, but I wanna stay on topic, which is that I don't think anyone really in the neighborhood is opposed to, at this point, moving forward and having a decent, modern building built there. However, I don't think it seems fair to rescind the fees, permit fees. Having had to submit for permit fees ourselves with the city for projects we've done to improve our habitat. It's just kind of the cost of doing business when you're within the city, and it is unfortunate for Akis, I think, to not have potentially been responsible directly for it. However, as the owner of the property and overseeing the project, unfortunately, that falls upon him. It sounds to me, by what the staff said earlier, that there is no way within the way codes stands currently that, that it can be rescinded. But I would propose that perhaps, you know, that the fees stand as is, the violation has occurred and we've had to live with a bombed-out looking building now for several years. And Akis would be better perhaps suited pursuing his contractor in court to have them pay and cover the fees for them. Thank you.
Thank you, speakers. Is there anyone else in line to speak on this item?
No.
Okay, the time is seven sixteen and the public hearing is closed. And that brings us back to deliberation for the commission and feel free to ask more questions of staff if you need clarification, but I think that they were clear that there's not an action that's recommended from staff for this item.
I'd like legal clarification. So, as I understand it, the planning commission has no purview over this, over this matter. So I guess then it's, it really doesn't matter, right, in terms of a recommendation or not? It would have no impact or meaning, is that correct?
Well, you're be, this is a request to modify a conditional use permit, so it is within the purview of the planning commission to review and consider modifications to use permits. However, this modification that's requested, it's staff's position that a modification can't be made in the manner that the applicant is requesting. The applicant is requesting modification or removal of a condition of approval to pay permit fees that exist whether or not they're actually included in the conditions of approval. Even if that condition of approval wasn't written in the conditions, the applicant would be required to pay the five-times permit fee, which is the penalty for construction without permits. So the only reason that this is before you this evening is because it is a modification request to a conditional use permit. And oddly, this will go to the city council as well, and we do need a recommendation from the planning commission this evening because the city council was the ultimate approval of authority for this conditional use permit. So staff is asking for your recommendation on the request, which again is to modify the conditional use permit. And so we're asking, we will, you know, need a motion and a vote on your recommendation to the city council, what they should do. Staff's position will be the same at the council level.
I have one question, Kristi. Is it your contention that if city council had not taken a vote and highlighted this five-times permit fee that it still would be due, but that was just something that was, happened to be highlighted in that decision?
That's correct.
Commissioner Wax?
It seems as though city council was aware of that at, at the time, of that stipulation, yes? Was, was that a matter of the meeting?
I was there and I, I will say that we were made aware that this was actually part of the master fee schedule. Yes.
Okay.
If there's no further deliberation, do I have a motion for a recommendation to the city council as to make a modification or uphold the conditions of approval?
I move that we uphold. Or recommend upholding.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Wax and a second from Commissioner Henme. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Chief has recused. Commissioner Henme?
Aye.
Commissioner Ming?
Aye.
Commissioner Wax?
Aye.
Commissioners Drummond, you tell me you are absent. Chair Martinez?
Aye.
Motion passes four oh.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to our next.
Aye.
I just wanted to make a comment to Mr. Bryant, which is that to me, this issue is, this money should be coming from your contractor. He's the person that sounds like if he didn't receive approval from you, he should have. And he's, so the extra money, which is by my calculation is thirty-six thousand dollars, is money that the contractor should be paying. And frankly, I think to, you know, if that email was, you know, accurate and timely from your architect, clearly they're saying, don't do this. And so if that were correct, he was. And so if that were correct, he was told not to do it and he did it despite that. So this is more an issue between you, between the contractor and you, I think. The, um, and I, it, it very much sounds like you would have been charged the five time fee whether or not the city council would have taken it up, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. Can we call back in, Commissioner Chafe?
Yeah, you can just keep going with the meeting.
Okay, so that'll bring us to item seven point two, which is objective standards. And as I noted earlier in the meeting, item seven point two is continued to a meeting on October twenty-sixth, so we will not be hearing a presentation. However, if there's anyone here tonight who wishes to give public comment, I'm going to go ahead and open a public hearing, so you would have the room to do so. The time is seven twenty-two PM. The public hearing is open and anyone who wishes to address the commission on this matter is welcome to do so and will be limited to three minutes. I see no one physically present in the council chambers. And I'll ask if any speaker cards have been submitted, or if anyone is joining us on Zoom with a raised hand.
I see no raised hands and we have no comment cards.
Very good. The time is seven twenty-three and I will close the public hearing. And that will take us to planning commissioner comments. Does anyone have any parting words for us this evening? None? Commissioner Chafe didn't make it to adjournment. Should I let her come back in and then adjourn? Okay, we still have a quorum, so the time is seven twenty-three and this meeting is adjourned. We'll see you on October twenty-sixth, everybody.